Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's March 25th, 2024. The town council committee meeting to order. At this time, the first order of business will be public. Anybody in the public that wishes to be heard on any matter that's not on the agenda, or any matter for that? Anyone in the public wish to be heard? All right, seeing none at this time, we'll hear from members of town councils. It's not on the agenda, but I understand Mr. Brooks has got something he'd like to bring to our attention.
Yes, sir, I do.
Councilman Brooks?
I put in front of all the councilors and Mr. Stallings. I'm a part of the Rotary Club here in Smithfield, and we have done a major project in conjunction with the Suffolk Rotary Club. We received a district grant, and a lot of people know Steve Edwards, who is head of the Gualphley Frontier Farm Education Foundation, which is also known as Mill Swamp Indian Horses. That project has finally been completed. We built it from the very ground up, and the dedication is going to be on April 6th at 11:00 a.m. Everybody from the public to the people that attend his PTSD, special needs children, it's an equine therapy program, is invited to attend. So if you need further information for those of you that don't have it, I'll be happy to give it to you. But thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilman Brooks. Anyone questions for you? All right, thank you. Seeing none, any other council member which should be heard? Uh, Councilman Smith?
Jim Phillips called me and asked, could he speak today? And I think we've probably overlooked him. Maybe he didn't hear us.
Maybe he did not hear us. I did call for public comments.
Public comments, yeah.
He is on the agenda under funding board by the way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good to go. All right, for the comments, questions, members of council? All right. At this time, I'd like to open the Public Safety Committee meeting. The members are Chairman is Councilman Collins, Councilman Gibbs, and Councilman Brooks. Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's already open, so Chief, we can start with you.
I'd like to say good afternoon to Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thanks, sir. The first thing I would just like to share with you all is that you all have our February activity report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions as it relates to our February report. I would just like to make reference to the investigative report from the month of February. You would see that we've had an ABC store larceny during the month of February, and we also had, thank you, we also had one on March the 14th, which led to the apprehension of two people. It also resulted in a pursuit throughout the town of Smithfield, into Suffolk, back through Smithfield, and ending at the county line of Syracuse when we were able to set up a perimeter. The next morning, we were able to make an arrest. We have since then met with the members of ABC Board, the law enforcement division, and to take a look at the ABC store that we have here in town to try to reduce the number of larcenies that we've had in that, in that business. From January of last year to today's date, we've had a total of 18. Some of those were in progress, and some of those were after the fact that they looked at the video, discovered that a larceny has occurred. And so we are planning to do a security assessment with the management of ABC to try to set some things in place to curtail larcenies. I would have you all to know that Smithfield is not the only locality. This is happening throughout the greater Hampton Rose area, and I will share with you that the ABC Commission does not view the larcenies in the Smithfield store as a high volume of larcenies. However, it does affect our numbers, and so we are taking the steps. I would have you to know that we are doing some things some other agencies are not doing as I found out from speaking with the SAC Supervisor Special Agent in the Hampton office. But I'm happy to share with you all that we are taking some steps to try to curtail that. In the form of additional operation updates, prior, I'm glad we had our assessment for accreditation on the 12th. I am happy to say that on the 12th, the team arrived, we had dinner at Smithfield Station, and prior to dinner, we did a static display. They were very pleased with the static display that was set up for them. They were very complimentary of the officer's knowledge and the equipment that was on display. On the next morning, they went into our files right at 9:00. By 4:00 that afternoon, they had completed our files. They were due to be with us until Wednesday or Thursday, and they were able to complete the files in one day. In that, what that entailed was there were 191 files reviewed. Of that 191 files, 10 of those files were waivers granted because it did not apply to us. So that left us with a total of 181 files reviewed. Of that 181 files, there were zero major returns, there were zero amount of returns. So we had a no-fault assessment. That goes to the hard work of our accreditation manager, Mr. Chris Kinkade and others that are involved with the accreditation process. We will be going to Roanoke before the commission on May the 30th, and this file will be read before the Valepsy Commission. After that, then the commission, Valepsy Commission will come down and make a presentation to the town and to the department with our accreditation assessment. So I am happy to share those things with you on behalf of the department. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Chief, any questions?
I do, if you would. Back to the ABC larcenies.
Yes, sir.
You know, the fact that they're not taking, I wouldn't say seriously, or don't consider it a serious issue as far as they're concerned, and I don't know why those larcenies also, I know they don't want to be double counted, but at the same time, you know, I know where you sit, and I know at the end of the day, those larcenies do mean a difference as far as our overall reporting numbers to the Uniform Crime Report, and it gives, they're not good impressions at the end of the day. That's the bottom line.
Yes, sir.
So my point is, is if you don't receive the assistance that you believe that you should be receiving from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control as it relates to safety and security that off, of that store, Mr. Stallings, I'd like to know about it, and I'd like to become involved.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Collins, Councilman Collins, as well, with letting them know how important it is to us.
Yes, sir.
I understand we're not going to get into the tactics of why we have larcenies and why we don't have larcenies and things like that, but as I, when I spoke with the Special Agent Charge as well, I said, you know, you've got a law enforcement division as well, and we have more than one store to be watching over as far as safety and security of our citizens are concerned, and we can't dedicate all of our police resources to that one store, that one facility. And I'm very serious about that. So if it's not, if it's not handled, and you don't get what you think you should get from there, I would really want to know.
Yes, sir. From our meeting, I felt as if our meeting was a very productive meeting. That's one of many to be held in the future along with management, so I'm hoping that we are moving in the right direction to reduce the amount of larcenies.
Okay.
I will, and if I may, I will say that Smithfield is one of the agencies that when we, when we receive a call of a past occurrence larceny, we go, we take the report, we actually investigate it, and because of the fact, those are some of the things that we are able to do, we are able to develop suspect information, and from that, we are able to make arrests. So.
Where other jurisdictions take the report over the telephone?
Yes, sir.
And that's it?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad we don't do that.
So one of the things we're planning to do is to keep the lines of communication open, and so that when we have activity there, they will be notified immediately.
Okay. One further question, good. The presentation as far as the accreditation certificates concerned?
Yes, sir.
That's normally done before town council?
Yes, sir.
Will that be the case this time as well?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
As far as accreditation goes, this is my first time through it, so I learned quite a bit talking to the auditors. It's not, it's not a small task to say that you were accredited just because you were, it went smoothly and you're doing the right, that's because you've done the right things over many years, or the agency has. I was shocked, I think Vice Mayor and I talked to the auditors, I think, is it 141 agencies were accredited, or something like that?
Out of 400 or something.
Out of 400 and something in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So not every, every agency does this, they don't see the importance of it, or they don't have the ability to do it. So kudos to you guys for going through that.
Well, if I might add.
As smoothly as it went.
If I might add, one even better than that. How many certified crime prevention communities are there in the Commonwealth of Virginia now?
It's not very many, but the number is increasing, but Smithfield is one of the smallest among the group.
We were, you know, it was eight when I was chief, out of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we were the smallest, and that's no small feat either as far as the community engagement and doing what you need to do and things like that. So we've got it going on.
Absolutely.
If we can just fill those vacancies.
Sir, speaking of vacancy, we have one in background page right now, and we are holding interviews on April the 8th for some of those applicants that have applied, that have law enforcement, prior law enforcement experience, and moving forward from there, we also reached out to those non-certs and trying to get those tested and scheduled for an interview. So we are making progress. The applications are coming in slowly, but they are coming in, and some of the applicants look decent.
Awesome. Any other questions? Seeing none, I want to close public safety. Chief, thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
Next committee is the Finance Committee. Chairs are Mr. Pack, Councilman Smith, and Vice Mayor Butler. Councilman Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing we have on our agenda this evening is a funding request for '24 and '25, and in those funding requests, we hear from some of the groups that are asking for part of these, and our first up is Mr. Phillips with the Friends of the Smithfield Library. Mr. Phillips, if you'll come up, please, sir.
Hello to everyone. As Councilman Smith indicated, I'd like to make an opening remark, if I may, before I answer questions or get into the programming, if I may. First off, on a side note, this has nothing to do with the Friends, but I was asked to do it, I want to thank our mayor, Steve Bowman, and our council member Jeff Brooks for their support in reaching out for the Veterans of Foreign Wars flag program that we conduct quite often in the town. If you see the flags flying up, we're the ones that do it, and they knew we were shorthanded this last time, and both gentlemen stood up and helped, so, and thank you for promoting the program, Mayor.
Our program, it's like.
Appreciate that, really do. The second thing I'd like to jump into is, in March, Terry Andrews informed me that she had an opportunity, and I believe she was in contact with Ms. Butler of the council regarding an author, a famous author, Jeffrey Blount, who was born and raised and educated here in the town of Smithfield. In fact, John Edwards was one of his mentors when he was a young man. In any event, Terry told me about the possibility, since he was going to come back to his hometown for a visit. We agreed to not only invite him, but we agreed to sponsor this author's event, and my thanks go out to Ms. Butler for her great help in putting out the advertising for this visit. It was, it was conducted very, very well. It was a great success. Also to Amy for working with us the best she could to accommodate, and her staff provided excellent accommodations for the visit. It was a very, very good success, and he's quite a speaker, and Smithfield should be proud of the success this gentleman has achieved, not only as an author, but as a TV director, and he's also a speaker that's in high demand. My lone disappointment was that the, our town newspaper didn't consider the event, I guess, big enough to cover, and that's unfortunate because it was, that's quite a cultural event for the town, and he's also agreed, Ms. Butler, to come back because he's, was interested when our librarian informed, informed him of our initiatives in the world of literacy and improving literacy, where we have control in our area. That's why we work so closely with Hardy Elementary School, and he was interested in that, and he's, remains in contact with Terry Andrews so that when we start the large initiative again on reading programs, he said he would partake and come back and actually speak for it, and he'd be a heck of a role model to have here. We'd love to have him, especially during our summer reading program that we're kicking off. That said, at the end of 2023, withdrawals, help, and support, we had a total of 377 programs in-house, in-house. This does not count the programs that we do outside when we go to either town events or other places where we take the programs to whoever the participants wish to be, but in-house, 377 programs with our small staff, with 8,509 participants across the spectrum, that's every age group. And that includes now, thankfully, we're continuing to have an increase in our young scholars, teenagers, who are coming and using the library more frequently and for a lot of reasons now. It's, it's good to have them, and that's one of the programs, we're just now wrapping that up at the end of '23. We remodeled the teen area to better accommodate them. We're almost there. I should know because Terry's told me I'm the one that's putting all the new furniture that's coming together tomorrow. I don't know what they do on them tables, but they're, they're heavy. I have no clue, but all the couches, all the lounge, all those things are in place where they want to get together and socialize, and so, and then we do the painting, the painting will be last. But anyway, I'll delay that before I take too much of your all's time. We'll get into, if you have any questions, I hope I provided an ample synopsis of each item. I'll go over them if you all would like, or just in case you have any particular questions. If not, there is one I want to focus in on. I just mentioned the teen area, and we're just about wrapping that up, and we took care of that, but we're, we'd also like help with the, the, well, merchants, the little ones, the, the small ones, the young group in that regard. We're, we're trying to, we're having a spillover. We're getting so successful in our program, and we've got the adults, the parents, grandparents, whatever, who bring the children in the program, and I don't know if I was able to provide you all with a photo, I don't know if you had a chance.
It's in our package, yes, sir.
Okay, great. Ms. Butler knows the area quite well, she's a frequent user of the library, so, but anyway, the spillover occurs because the adults and all that don't have enough room, and the children in the children's area, so it spills over to the teen area. For anyone who's either had teenagers or has teenagers now, know that don't always work, okay? The teens want their space, which, and I understand that and respect it. In any case, what we want to do is, because the programs are increasing in the library, but the library size is not increasing, we want to remodel the, when I say remodel, redo the children's area and how it's configured. We want to eliminate, if you look at the pictures, there's a series of bookcases that are on the floor that go, you know, towards the center of the floor, towards the wall, et cetera. That confines the seating area that we can have and the programming we can do. What we want to do is, there are designs now where there, you can have bookshelves for children that age that mounts directly to the wall, which then we can free up all of that floor space, every bit of it, and now we can do programming in there as well when we have our science programs, someone will come in and put on a program, the magic man, all, all those different things when the kids, when the kids are there. We can do them there because the demand for the, we call it the community center, but it's a big conference room, the demand there, that thing is booked all day, every day, and so it's, so you, we're trying to prevent where we don't have to tell someone no because we got to have the little children in there because there's going to be a magic show or something like that for them, and we don't have the room, and plus it, again, you get there where it's located, you got the teens there, et cetera, on the outside of the doorway there. In any case, that's what we're trying to do. Everything else is basically what we've asked for. We continue to do the story walk because Terry has tried to walk away from it, but the merchants in town keep dragging us back to do it. They don't, they just don't want us to stop doing that, so we try to be, become more inventive with different ways to, to do it, but, so we're glad to accommodate the town merchants. If that's what they want, then we'll, we'll continue to do it, but everything else is basically a continuing on, except for some expansion of them, particularly in the teen and the, the adults, and including the senior programs. So with that, I'll end, shut up, and let you all ask any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Just to give the council and those viewing an overview of what's going on here, the Blackwater Regional Library a number of years ago was a budget item in our, in our budget here, and it was a fairly substantial budget line item, and it was our expected contribution to the local library system. Well, when we started investigating, we found that it went to the Blackwater Regional Library system and not necessarily the Smithfield branch, and Mr. Phillips and his group were active in the local branch, and we made the decision as the council at that time to no longer support the Blackwater Regional Library as a whole, but to support Mr. Phillips and the Friends of the Library group, and I guess we're a number of years into this, probably six or seven years.
Well, I've been president now, I'm a 10th year, so it's been, it's been 10 years.
Yeah, so that's why we're seeing this here, so this is, this is the way that council was able to contribute to the library system with, with tax dollars, but to ensure that those tax dollars are spent here in Smithfield instead of going to any other libraries. So that, that was the purpose of us funding the Friends of the Library group as opposed to the library system together. Any questions, Mr. Phillips, while he's up here?
I do have a question, Mr. Phillips.
Yes, ma'am.
The budget that the Blackwater Library budgets for each?
Each, each particular library, okay.
Where does that money go?
It's used, well, a lot of it, of course, is staffing.
Oh, okay.
What they give there. They give a certain proportion to summer reading to kick it off, which makes it, shall we say, limited. Every, every library has to be exactly the same. I don't know another way to say that, but it's regimentated, okay? So the only way we found is the Friends, where we could get out of that constriction was to, we ourselves also kick in additional funding because the library maybe wants to do something unique or special, but Blackwater, you know, their funding doesn't, doesn't go that far, so we expand upon it, and then when this opportunity, we expand it even more. So that's why it's unique here in Smithfield. No, there's no other library in this county that conducts programs we do, none of them.
So they don't provide any funding for the physical facility?
Oh, no, no, that's the county on that regard. You talking about repairs, ma'am, or talking about new furniture?
Well, no, the shelving, some of the.
Some of the shelving they will do if it's unique and not in their systems, then they'll ask, like, the furnishing, the chairs and stuff they wanted for the teens.
Okay.
But that's when you start getting into a different look, and so I agreed with my board to say, we will, we'll fund it, we'll, we'll take care of that. I didn't know I was going to be the labor, but that's fine, that's fine, you know, but...
Well, Terry's my newfound friend, and I found out the relationship now.
Oh, she's great.
Between the library and the Friends of the library.
If you ever come there and you wonder where I'm at, it's because Kathy Burlow has me stuffed in the back reviewing books and pricing them. I forgot to tell the mayor, and, yeah, I forgot to tell the mayor and Mike, she did send her respects to both of you. I thought better than to bring her today, so, because I have another meeting later on.
Anything else for Mr. Phillips while we have him here?
Just, just one formality, although we've got it in front of us, the rest of the crowd and those watching do not have the amount that's being requested, so if Mr. Phillips could just ask, basically, what is the, what's the number that you're, you're asking for from the, from the council, sir?
In total, $4,539.
That's all I needed, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Phillips, thank you. We always appreciate the work you do for the county, or, excuse me, for the, for the library.
Library.
And the kids and all that, and we're happy to be able to contribute at a local level.
Appreciate that, and a side note, as of, was it January 2024, the Friends of the Library will be officially celebrating their 100th anniversary.
Wow.
And no, I'm not the one that initiated, started that group. That's a rumor.
Right, it was Carter, right?
Yeah. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks, Jim. Next on our agenda, we have a request from the 1750 Islewhite County Courthouse Board. Mr. Huntley?
Hi.
Good afternoon. Hello, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and visitors. I would like to apologize that David Huntley and Lanny Hinson, our directors, are unable to attend today due to health issues. My name is Jim Klein, I'm the treasurer of the 1750 Islewhite County Courthouse. First of all, we'd like to thank you for all the donations and support that you have given us in the past years. It gives us great pleasure that the 1750 Islewhite Courthouse is a centerpiece and symbol represented on our town seal. It symbolizes the beginning of our local government and the importance that the building has had during the creation of Smithfield, being that it was one of the first buildings built in town. Our mission is to advance the 1750 Islewhite Courthouse and its remarkable role in the American experience. Our vision is all who visit the 1750 Islewhite Courthouse be engaged by the story of this important building that's seen in the context of American history and inspired by relevance for today's world and into the future. 2023 was a good year for us. We welcomed over 9,000 visitors through the courthouse, not only from our local community, local areas, but from all over the United States and several countries around the world. We recorded over 3,000 volunteer hours, and we work closely with the Tourism Visitor Center and other local groups to promote Smithfield and to encourage visitors to come to our town. For 2024, we will continue to work toward our mission and our vision. We will continue to welcome for free of charge visitors to our courthouse. We continue to encourage visitors come to Smithfield by participating in many other events. We plan to participate again in the Wayne and Brew Fest coming up. In, in April, we will have our Court Day, which actually reenacts a court case that actually happened in that courtroom, and after the conclusion of that day, we are going to celebrate the transfer of ownership from Historic Smithfield to the 1750 Islewhite Courthouse Board. We also will be reading the Declaration of Independence to celebrate Independence Day, the reading of the preamble of the Constitution to begin the observance of Constitution Week, working with the Daughters of the Revolution. We have a fundraiser, a ghost walk, which features local historic personalities in October 18, 19, and our Christmas in Smithfield, December 7th and 8th. We continue to support the Visitor Center and other sponsors in the area by opening up during their events and appearing in our attire during their events. Our commitment to preserving the 1750 Islewhite Courthouse for the community is made possible by our three fundraisers and by donations like the ones that you have given us in the past. Again, let us thank you for that support in the past, and thank you for considering any support in the future. We appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Klein, and your request was for $5,000.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any questions for Mr. Klein while we have him here? Mr. Klein, thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight, we have our February financial statements. Mr. Chairman, you would, I think you read the attachments at the bottom. There are others at the top that don't have attachments that I think are here as well.
Correct. Okay, correct me, because I'm, what am I missing here?
The next would be the Genevieve Shelter. There's the Genevieve Shelter, Christian Outreach, and Islewhite Arts League as well, I believe. well, I believe.
Well, I don't see them, so you might, you might have to help me with this, sir.
I see them.
I'll help you out, sir.
Appreciate that. Yes, ma'am, can you state your name and who you represent?
Yes, good afternoon, council committee and mayor, I am Marleesa Montgomery, the executive director for the Genevieve Shelter. Thanks again for the opportunity to share the importance of funding our agency for another fiscal year. We're currently requesting $10,000 to assist our agency with emergency shelter services and direct services. As a 501(c)(3) organization, managing financially is becoming more challenging yearly. All of the domestic violence shelter programs are facing, in the state of Virginia, are facing cuts in the new fiscal year 24, 25. We had high hopes that the Put Victims First campaign would provide domestic violence and sexual assault programs with new funding sources to afford all of our services, but sadly, that did not come to fruition. The state's financial 2025 budget does not provide additional funds to victim services. Instead, we're facing, all of the programs are facing a 20% cuts in our federal funding services. We are currently reassessing how to aid and how we will provide direct services at the same level that we have in past years. The impact is, it's significant, with cuts coming at a time when we are trying to increase our bed capacity to avoid spending funding for motels. We are, we are, some of the statistics that I would like to share are statistics of clients that we have served in the Smithfield area. We serve from Smithfield 321 victims and survivors of violence and their children, with various services, such as 38 families were placed in emergency shelter, and that could be a combination of emergency shelter and motels when we're full, which totaled 92 individuals, and we have received, which also receive meals and toiletry items as well during their shelter stay. From Smithfield, we provided 3,483 nights of shelter. 72 victims and survivors were assisted in court by our legal advocate, who's providing legal consultations on, every Monday for the juvenile domestic court. 59 clients received free counseling services and support group services. Employment assistance and rental assistance and utilities were provided to 112 victims from the Smithfield area, and we also provided emergency assistance with transportation The numbers of clients that we're serving is a mixture of all of our programs, but in addition to our shelter program, we also operate our community-based program, designed to provide services to individuals who are no longer in need of emergency shelter, but in need of supportive services due to domestic violence, because some of them have obtained protective orders and now facing operating single parent households in, for the first time in, in the Smith, city of Smithfield, in the town of Smithfield. We are currently building a new safe house, and this new house is called the Nora Safe House. The new house will be able to increase our bed capacity from 36 beds to 52 beds, allowing us the opportunity to provide more clients emergency shelter in shelter versus going to motels. The average weekly rate of motel stays are $718. This price of these motels have nearly doubled from the last year, and the high cost of food and also creating a burden on the shelter care. The fundings that we are seeking will be used to provide emergency shelter operational services and direct services, which also includes a small portion of payroll. Due to the rising, due to the rising prices to inflation and a lack of affordable housing, families are staying in shelter, an average of 60 to 120 days, which is much longer. Even when clients can find affordable housing, I'm sorry, when, even when clients can find available housing, they're unable to afford the housing, and so we are still having to continue to provide services to them in our community program. And so, again, I would like to thank you for your continued support of our agency for all of the many years. We are approaching our 36th year birthday in May, and the city, the town of Smithfield has been tremendously supportive, and we appreciate all the services that you all have helped us over the many years. Thank you again. Any questions?
Thank you. One thing I'd like to point out, well, you read a lot of facts, but you, you're asking for $10,000.
Yes.
And for that, you serve town of Smithfield residents 3,483 nights last year. That's $2.87 per night. That's very efficient. That is extremely efficient. So as we consider this, I wanted to point that out, guys, that we're not talking about an agency here that is, that is, you know, wasting money. To, to be able to take care of folks at $2.87 a night is unheard of, so. I heard lots of things. Any questions while we have, have her up here?
I have, I have a couple. The 372 that you mentioned, are they actual town residents of Smithfield, or are they Smithfield zip code, or how do you differentiate those, those actual numbers as far as-
Well, in our system, we have, it's separated into Smithfield, those are Smithfield statistics. I have Isle of Wight, I have Windsor statistics, they're all broken down.
So they're based on street versus zip code, because there's a lot of zip codes of 23430 that are, that are in the county, okay. What did we provide last year, if anyone can?
9,000.
9,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The year before that, it was 10,500.
Was 10,500, okay. All right, well, to echo what Mr. Pax said, I know as a former law enforcement officer here in the county, matter of fact, I think I was, what year did, did it start? Do you know what year the Genevieve?
1988.
That's the year that I became chief deputy here, and I remember specifically when it started and the, the good things, and I'm sure chief and deputy chief back there can echo the, the good work, not, not only from an efficiency perspective, but from a holistic perspective of what you provide for those that are most in need and most out of time. So, again, to echo what Mr. Pax said, I commend you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming in today. So I don't stop skipping over folks and read my notes appropriately, so the highlighted blue ones. Next up, we have the Christian Outreach.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the year.
No, I'm just the director tonight, or today. So I came prepared to this meeting because last year, I didn't have any facts with me, and I felt really stupid, so hopefully I'll answer your questions upfront. I also brought some posters, if anybody is not familiar with the Christian Outreach program, it'd be, I don't have enough for everybody, but I can get you more. So, again, just as a Genevieve project, shelter project, I want to thank you for the money that we received last year. It was significant and much needed. Last year, we hit an average of approximately 600 families a month towards the end of the It's hard to quantify that, but I'd like to give you an example. Right now, we have a thousand, over a thousand clients in our database, that's Isle of Wight County. The number of Smithfield clients is 574 by street address. That is over 50% that we serve. Now, that's just food. We also do emergency services, where we give up, give money for rent, utilities, prescription drugs, things like that. We do diapers, we've given out 29,000 diapers in the last year, and that's from premies to ready to go to the grave. It's the, the whole spectrum. So there's food, there's more than the food program, but going back to the food, food program, I want to give you an example. A couple of weeks ago, somebody asked me, well, what's that bag of food worth if I had to go to the grocery store? So I took the average bag of what we give out, I'm talking canned goods, boxes, and I went to Food Lion, and I picked an average price, and I didn't get the expensive stuff or the cheap stuff. It came out to $35 a bag. With the number of people that we give out food to, that comes up to over $65,000, $6,500 a month. Now, if that's for one or two people, if you've got three people or four people in your household, you get two of those bags. If you have five or over, you get two, but you get two of everything else. So we give out a produce bag that has fresh eggs, a dozen eggs, it has vegetables, it has fruit, has a loaf of bread, it has bread from Food Lion that's a day old, things like that. And then we give out a bag of meat. Bag of meat's probably got, well, it's at least five pounds, it's never less than five pounds. Lately, we've been giving out center cut pork chops that have been donated, chicken wings and chicken breasts that have been donated, and so I can't imagine what that costs. I know I can't afford it in most cases. So the 35 for each family, you know, that could be well over $100 by the time you had all that meat, all those vegetables, the eggs, and all the other things. So the amount of money that you give to help people here in Smithfield, it, it goes a long ways. I think I asked for around 13,000, or 13,000 was what we got last year, and I'm not, I don't want to be greedy, but it, it would help if we had that same amount. One thing we have instituted to help get more good food to the people at a lower cost is a federal program called TFAF, Temporary Emergency Food Assistance Program. Everything that comes from the food bank under that program is free. Everybody that comes, that qualifies for that program is on some, probably under some other program or low income. I can tell you in Smithfield alone, there's 386 people that qualify for that. That's a pretty significant number out of 574, that's telling me that they're getting SNAP, they're getting Medicaid, and some of the other federal money programs, or their income is below 3,000, I think, a month. So I think that's the majority of it. Any, any questions?
Questions?
Just comments, Chairman. Prior to back surgery and knee replacement surgery, I volunteered pretty regularly at Christian Outreach. Mr. Rollins can sit here and give us the numbers that he gives, and they're very, very impressive numbers, but until you've worked there and see what you see, and what a difference this program makes in the lives of people that are at their wits' end as far as how they're gonna feed their children and things like that, it's really hard to really get the real feeling of what this program actually does. And I can say that after watching the operation there, being involved in bagging and sorting and furniture and things like that, it's a good program, and, and, and they've got some really, really wonderful dedicated people that, that do a wonderful job there, so.
They do.
I'm just here to commend Mr. Rollins for his leadership there, and also all the volunteers that I remember very specifically, and there's a significant number that are there, pretty much every time that door opens, they're there. So I think it's a program well worth supporting, and it's got my support, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make an observation that Rick did not mention. With the federal program, with the free food, it will also save money on Christian Outreach's budget, but Christian Outreach, the building, the facility itself has some growing pains, because if we are able to participate in that program, that food, those food products have to be segregated by the sales, and right now, that's creating a storage problem.
Which I think as of today is solved, and we're not, we're not gonna be asking to put up a shed.
Very good. Any other questions from Mr. Rollins while we have him here?
Invite, invite anybody in the room that, if you would like to see what goes on there, please just call the number on our website. Glad to show you around, doesn't have, Monday nights, we're open till 6:00. So, you know, if you're coming home from work or whatever, you got a few minutes, step by. All it takes is one, seeing one person getting food and having cry to you and thank you, you know, pray for you, sit down, sit down and pray, you know, can you pray with me? Because there's something special going on. I mean, that happens every single day. Whether they got, you know, and when they got a car full of kids, and you know that they're driving a car that's just barely making it, you know? It's just amazing to see people so appreciative. And by the way, we, we never ask for income, if somebody says, comes up and says, I need food, I can't feed my family, or I don't have any food in my house, we give them food. It may not be a lot, but it is enough to carry them for a week at least, and we never ask for, well, what's your income? Well, you're driving a Mercedes, what are you doing? You know, why don't you have money? We never question, because we're not there to judge. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, on this section this evening, is the Isle of Wight Arts League.
I'm appearing today on behalf of Diane Milner, who's the president of the Isle of Wight Arts League Board. She submitted the funding request, she's not able to attend. I'm Sheila Gualtney, I'm also a board member, and I'm the director of the Visual Arts Program of the Arts League, which is the Arts Center at 319 located on Main Street. Our three other programs are the Smithfield Music, Sundays at 4:00, and the Summer Concert Series. Our request for funding includes the town participation in the Creative Community Partnership Grant Program of the Virginia Commission for the Arts. The town's contribution is matched by the Commonwealth with funds allocated to the operation of the Arts Center. The Arts League also requests funding from Isle of Wight County through participation in the same creative community grant program. There's a few fresh faces on council, so I'll give a brief review of the history. The Arts Center formed a partnership with Isle of Wight Smithfield Tourism Bureau in 2008, and in that same year executed a memorandum of understanding with the town and the county and tourism, which would govern our joint operations in the leased space at 319 Main Street. And there, the Arts Center not only provides our area artists with a venue for the sales of their artwork and other creative products, it provides visitors with an artful first impression of our area. And the Arts League objection, objective is to enhance the quality of life in our community for our citizens through music performances, art exhibits, and we also contribute to the economic vitality of our downtown. Other ways that the Arts Center raises funds, we seek donations, memberships, charge commissions- Other ways that the Arts Center raises funds, we seek donations, memberships, charge commissions on sales classes, and we pursue other arts-based grants. I thank you very much for your past support of our program through the Creative Community Partnership, and thank you for your consideration of our budget request this time.
Ms. Gualtney, what is that budget request?
The amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Four thousand five hundred.
Okay, and of that, which part of that is the fifty-fifty match with the Creative Community Grant?
The Commonwealth will mark, match that.
Okay, so the forty-five hundred dollars, the full amount is matchable?
Correct, correct. The town contribution is.
So in your budget, you'll see our contributions nine thousand, but we also show a revenue of forty-five hundred coming in from that grant?
Gotcha.
Yeah, it is confusing how the Commonwealth requests it be done. The matching portion is received by the town and then forwarded to the Arts League.
Gotcha, very good. Any questions, Ms. Gualtney, while we have here?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I believe that takes care of all of our funding requests for today, and we have our February financial statements up now.
Mayor Bowman and Town Council, can you hear me okay?
Pull a little bit further, probably, Laura.
Maybe I should turn it on. Is that better? Is that good? Should be on. Okay, now it's off. Yeah, okay. There's no light on here? If it is, I'm not looking.
No.
Oh, it's too old. It's too old, okay. As in the past, you have a copy of your financial statements in front of you. Again, I'm not going to go over every single page, just going to hit some highlights that go on, onto it. I'll talk a little bit about revenue. Well, we are billing the second half of real estate, and that will be due June 5th. Collections to date are one million seventy-one thousand, and that is forty-nine point ninety-three percent of what we expect to get in, which is good. There's not much of a change since last month, so it is steady. If you look on page two, personal property was due December the 5th, and to date collected is nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, and that's tracking at eighty-eight point forty percent of budget. It's exactly where we were last year, too. Which makes me lead into the delinquencies. Delinquent bills will be mailed out this week, and they're, they'll be due at the end of April. And right now, the total bills that we'll send out for real estate delinquencies are two-hundred-and-eighty-four. Those are, the length of time for those are 2004 to 2023, so some go back twenty years. That is a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And personal property goes back to 2019. Out of that, there are two-thousand-twenty-one bills that will go, and that is the amount of three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
So we're about a half a million dollars.
Right, right. And Michael and I were talking about what we could do going forward to reduce the delinquencies that we have, and we have some ideas about that.
New York seems like taking people's property. It's been rather proper, uh, popular lately. Perhaps we can start gathering some personal property, so.
You have a personal property issue, yeah. They do that a lot. I think that that's something that you have to really look at, especially some of those really, really old real estate bills. We'll go on to, if nobody has any questions, we'll go on to sales tax, and again, we get that monthly, we just got a new one in today, I don't know how much that was collected to date. It shows that we are, financial statement showed that we're three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, and that's about half where we need to be. Hopefully, we'll get some more in, in the latest little bit. MUNIS shows that we have a little bit more, but again, we've adjusted that based on when we get that in. So utility taxes, right now, we're at a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, almost a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars, which is sixty-six point twenty-eight percent of budget, and that tracks to where we were last year as well. And that's always, there's a lot, I don't know what the delinquencies are right now on that, but I can get that for you if you need it. Business license is due on April 15th, so we'll see how much that is. And overall, if you look at the very first page, we'll give you your over, we'll give you revenues and expenses, which is basic, your P and L statement. Overall expenditures are sixty-four point twenty-five percent of the budgeted expenditures for the year, and let's see, revenue is five billion seven-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, which is fifty-six percent, so we're tracking just a little bit low on the revenue. But because we have business license coming in, and because we have the second part of the real estate coming in, we'll get a lot of money coming in towards the later part of the year. Let's see, outstanding debt, you have the debt table in your packet. If there are no questions about that, I'll move on to the cash balances?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the cash balances, as you will see, include all the funds that we have now. If you'll note, I did move some money from the bank account that we have, and it, the general fund says it has seven million three-hundred thousand dollars. I didn't really like what the rate they were giving us, it was okay, but I thought we could do just a little bit better by moving that over into the VIP. And I moved five million dollars over there. And once we finish out the RFP, I plan on consolidating most of the bank accounts so that we have a lot less. Right now, if we wanted to invest everything that we have, total amount that we have in the bank account is to date, not as at the end of last month, but to date, is sixteen million seven forty-nine. Out of that, some is tied up in just holding out for expenditures that we have coming through, and some we have to hold for the water and the sewer accounts, which we want to consolidate those together. And let's see, you also have the benchmark report in there to show you how we're doing with that. Let me flip back to where that is. The benchmark report shows where we are to date with our investments. And as you'll note, the first one, the sweep, the town bank, so we're tracking to the ninety-day T bill again, and that ninety-day T bill is five point two-four percent. And the earnings rate for town bank is fine, but it's running still below what we could earn with the VIP, even though it's not significant, it still counts, I believe. So that's why I moved that much money over there. And there, another thing that town bank is doing, or not doing, we're supposed to be gaining some interest just on our general fund account, and they haven't paid us interest on that general fund account. They're starting to charge us fees for that, they're not supposed to do that yet, so I moved the money. And I got a phone call, and I said, well, speaks for itself.
Keep them honest.
It's like, I had to do it. You said you were going to pay it, and you didn't.
Yeah.
So I gave you a brand-new report, and in that report, it doesn't have a title, it just is a spreadsheet that tells month by month. The first part of the year is baked, it's what we call actual. The second part of the year, April, May, and June, of course, are forecasted. I based all the numbers, the revenue expenditures, on what we did last year. It could fluctuate because I'm building it to see how it is so I can treat it better just a little bit next year, better next year, so we can get better estimations of what the forecast should show. But I believe, if it goes as expected, we should be, for revenue, a hundred-and-two percent of budget, expenditures a hundred-and-two percent of budget. Hopefully, that'll be what it is. I think that's it for me.
Very good. Any questions, Ms. Ross?
Yes, Chairman.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions. And I'm sorry, I should have asked one before you moved on. But back in, on the general funds page, the FEMA Great Springs Road budget line item.
That, that shows as an expense, and I think you had mentioned that there may be funds coming in through. I'm just, I'm just trying to get educated, because that shows an expense now, so it hits us hard with no revenue, but it's part of a grant.
Yes, sir. That is, as you mentioned, the FEMA grant for the acquisition, demolition of those homes that are in the flood-prone area. It is an expense right now, because we have actually purchased the homes, the consultant has submitted all the reimbursement requests for those expended funds, so once we get those funds in, then we'll do a budget amendment to include the revenue in the budget. So right now, all you are seeing is the expense, because we have not received those funds back yet.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and if I recall correctly, just clarifying, correct me if I'm wrong, we, as a council, I think before you got it, agreed that we would extend that amount of money ahead of the, matter of fact, we were required to do it, weren't we?
Right, we were.
Yeah.
And just as an update, we have acquired the four homes that front Great Springs Road. Three of the four have vacated, the last one's supposed to be out by the beginning of April. Those four, the fire department is going to use them for some internal training in the building, and the police department may as well, and then they'll be demoed. The one at the corner of Quail Street has not agreed to sell at this point in time, so right now, it looks like that one will remain and be not part of the grant moving forward. But, so that has progressed well, and we're happy that those folks have been able to move out and, you know, go on somewhere where they don't have to worry about flooding on a recurrent basis.
Is there, is there a timeframe on the house on Quail Street to make up their mind?
They hit, they officially declined the offer we made, so we have an official statement from them that that was their position. We've been working with them since then to try to work out some other option that may work to where they can just relocate the home. The consultant has reached back out and pretty much said that, you know, your decision has got to be final, and it's got to be final now, because we are nearing that point where for us to do something other than acquisition and demo of the home, we would have to do a change of scope in the grant. And so he would have to write that up and submit it. So they are pretty near the end of their opportunity to make that decision.
Well, I mean, they obviously can stay if they choose to, which is, is an opportunity, and just, I don't want that opportunity passed without them, you know, fully exploring.
And we explored some other options, because the town owns a small piece of property that's about the same size at the back of Quail Street, we wouldn't explore that with them. There's another vacant lot back in the neighborhood that they explored, and, so I mean, we've been working to try to find other options, but nothing has worked at this point in time. So right now, it looks like she's probably going to stay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment.
Yes, sir.
Going back to those delinquent taxes, and I'm glad that you and the town manager have something in mind as far as collections concerned. Feel very strongly about that, because I think if we don't aggressively go after those that are not paying the taxes, we do a significant disservice to those that are paying the taxes. And I do, I, I can't, I'm not going to start beating on the table, but I really do feel strongly about the necessity to aggressively collect delinquent taxes. I think it's, it's only fair to those folks that are scraping along at Christmas time to pay their personal property taxes, when you've got those out there that aren't and are kind of pretty much flaunting the law by doing it. So thank you for coming up with some ideas to try to figure that out, because that's a significant amount of money to the town of Smithfield.
It is.
So thank you.
Thank you.
And just going back real quick to the FEMA, the reason I asked was because it's only hidden as an expense, and I just wanted to make sure that sooner or later that it's going to balance out, so it, so the bottom line's going to improve from what it shows now. The other question I have is, I know towns don't have it, but where do I go to find a similar, similar to something called a balance sheet?
Because of the type of accounting that we do, it doesn't come out monthly, but we could provide that if you need to see it. But you have to almost look at the financial statements and glean that out of there because of the cash balances or assets. Any other assets that we have are the capital. And our long-term or short-term liabilities would be the debt that we have, and another few things in there.
Okay.
I would say the closest thing you have is those cash balances, and then looking at the expense reports to be able to.
And that's what I've been doing, I just didn't know we had something that was.
Right. There's nothing that'll look exactly the same as a business.
I understand, yeah. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
Anything else for Ms. Ross? Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, on your delinquent taxes, for the real estate, if we have any significant real estate bills, he can break suit after three years. So if you identify any significant real estate bills, we can take care of those.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay. Nothing else, we'll move forward here to our fiscal year '24, '25 budget. These are our initial TARPs, and this is Michael, is this you?
This is me, and this is just a precursor to kind of touch base and see if council has any wants, desires, things that you'd like for me to be looking at outside of the norm as we develop budget. And we have preliminary, you've got numbers in just about every hole already. The guidance that we're moving forward on is we are not going to recommend any tax increases anywhere, and that's how we've got it right now, and everything looks good for that. The caveat that I will say that we are looking at is we did get a six percent increase in trash collection fees. Currently, we do not recoup everything that we spend, we eat about ten dollars of the trash, the fee per month. Right now, we're paying about eighty-two dollars per resident per month, I'm sorry, per year, and we're recouping seventy-two of that. So we did get a six percent increase in our trash collection fees, so that fee may go up accordingly. On utilities, we had been doing small incremental increases so that we can keep up with inflationary costs, the cost of our chemicals, maintenance, you know, repairs, all of those supplies are going up, so we may look at doing about a quarter on our water rate and sewer rate. So currently, we're at six-eighty-one, we may look at adding a quarter to that. But right now, those are the only revenue increases, and right now, everything looks good. But I just wanted to give an opportunity that if there's something you want us to be looking at while we're finishing up the draft budget, we can start to incorporate that now.
Thoughts?
Just, just to comment back on a couple of things, that quarter's per hundred gallon, correct?
Per thousand.
I'm sorry, per thousand gallon.
Yes, and we are in the middle of doing a rate study now, but that won't be completed until, and be ready for implementation until the next budget cycle. This just helps us keep up with inflation as we go.
The other thing I remembered, you mentioned the chemicals as far as the art, those have gone up astronomically, have they not?
They have, as well as the cost of materials for us doing repairs to the system.
Because I remember, we were looking at something once recently, and what really caught our eye was the cost of the chemicals and the increase of the chemicals. Maybe it was last year's budget, but those things have, I mean, we're talking about tripled.
Right, we're seeing significant increases in materials and supplies for us to operate the system, and so this will just help us try to keep pace with that.
And those chemicals, I think, are the ones used for purification aspect and things like that, correct?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't believe how much they've gone up.
There was a, there was a significant conversation earlier this year when we were looking at the real estate reassessment, about what some of our members of council wanted to see as far as salaries of our employees, and some of the other things. This will be the time to weigh in on what our wishes are to Michael and Laura, to do that, and give them some guidance before we get a budget in front of us. Do we have any thoughts on some of these items we talked about earlier this year?
Well, I've talked with Michael, and I think we've all kind of talked as far as the employees, some of the salaries at some of the lower-level thirteen-fifty-an-hour employees, I think I said twelve-fifty one time, but thirteen-fifty, the minimum that are, that some of them are making that are, I mentioned at last meeting, that are doing the really, really heavy lifting, not, not cheesed upon, but it's reality, that need to be addressed or whatever. So I, you know, our biggest and best resource that we have are employees, and I think they deserve that, so I appreciate you bringing that up, but that's, that's significant as far as I'm concerned.
And I will comment, Ashley and I have done a lot of work around the salaries for this year. We are going to recommend that we set a minimum fifteen-dollar minimum wage now. We only have a very few number of people that are under that, but we will slide everything up to be able to offer that. We're also looking at some career progression things, especially in public works and parks and rec, some of those positions that are single incumbent people, so they really don't have any room to grow, but it'll give them, you know, say for example, groundskeeper position, you might have a one, two, and three. So over time and with, you know, performance, you can progress through those, even though there's not necessarily other positions to move into. So we are going to recommend some changes that'll hopefully help bring everybody up and, you know, make us competitive and keep us in line with the market.
But, but in previous conversations, so you're going to bring everybody up to fifteen dollars, everyone else gets six, there's a six percent raise in your budget?
That was last year.
And is it going to be repeated this year?
Um, we're a little less than that. Right now, and what we're looking at, and again, this isn't final, so we're not there, is four percent with a minimum of a thousand, and then some longevity bonuses to try to help with compression and reward some of those folks who have been here a significant amount of time. So that's where we're playing right now, and right now, we look completely okay to be able to do that. Um, and right now, we look completely okay to be able to do that. Um, the process moving forward, the official draft budget will be delivered to council the first day of May. Um, we hope to have another discussion of it in April, so we'll, we'll have time to talk about it again. But officially delivered to everybody the first of May, then we'll do a presentation on it at the May council meeting. So we'll, we'll have more time, ample time, to be able to review it and go through it.
And do we have any work sessions on that, or is it just everything in, in the council meeting that we go through the presentation?
We, we can do a standalone if we need to. Uh, we can do some of that at committee meetings, but, um, especially since we've got two new folks, it may not be a bad idea to, to do a standalone budget work session this year. So we can
What, what we've done in the past, Councilman Collins, is, is discuss it thoroughly at committee meetings.
Okay.
And as needed, if we feel we need more time or additional meetings, we then schedule them.
That makes sense.
Right.
Okay, good.
Um, just a question. I would presume that within the next month or so, we would revisit, um, a closed session relating to real estate that we, that also may or may not impact the budget?
Those, those are one of my next questions. Do we have any capital improvement requests?
That, I think, as I understand from the town manager, some of the steps, not to get into it, not to, but some of the steps that we needed to have made are, are, are being made that would better inform us, um, as we look at, uh, items that were involved in closed session.
Yes. And by all means, if anybody comes up with anything in between now and then, call me, email me. And, you know, again, we, we just about have numbers in every hole, so we kind of know where we, where we are wherever we're at. Thank you.
Anything else for budget? We just have one little bit more business for finance today, and this invoice is in excess of $20,000, which, which require council authorization. And this is certainly the full thing. We have, uh, Lewis Construction for the Red Point Water Service line relocation for $27,600. And then we have Lewis also for the Route 258 and Great Spring Roads project at $53,825. Uh, and then finally, we have item C and D, I'm going to kind of combine in one. They're, they're essentially for the same thing. Uh, these are both Windsor Castle Park boardwalk restoration projects. Uh, we have the first one at 101,49634, the second one for $95,14372. Uh, that, that brings your total to $196,640. And we still have a little bit left to bill on these. We have a $33,837 left to bill on these for bringing a total to $230,477 for the two bridges. Of that, uh, we received just a little bit shy of $50,000 from T-Mobile and the grant, as well as the contractors writing us a check for $25,000. So we're seeing a $75,000 cost on that. So the two bridges, uh, will come in right at $155,000 or so. That's $77,500 per bridge.
Mr. Pat, I'm sorry, that's for the station bridge alone.
This is the station bridge alone?
Yes, sir.
Woo!
Yes. It's a long bridge.
Yeah, geez. Talk about inflation, that's about what they were the first time, I think.
Uh, I had my, uh, pier redect about seven months ago.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a station bridge alone, okay. Um, things to remember, guys, that we probably ought to be putting some money aside for this. This is about a 15-year lifespan on these bridges, uh, even though this is the new, newest, latest and greatest wood, and it's expected to last about 15 years. So if we're looking for $230,000, 15 years from now, it's going to be half a million dollars with inflation. So, um, our parks have a cost. Let's, let's get out there and use them. They're certainly, uh, wonderful, but they do have a cost.
It's all Amy's fault.
These are at three and four. Any questions on these two? No? All right, here are none on these invoices. We'll send these along to council for consideration at our committee meeting. Any else to come before finance today? Nothing here. We'll go and move to Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Parks and Recreation Committee, members, uh, Councilman Gibbs, who's not present, is the chair, Vice Mayor Butler, and Councilman Brooks. Who's going to take it?
Vice Mayor?
Oh, I'll take it. It looks pretty simple. Um, there's only
You never know.
Well, there's, when I say simple, there's only one item under Parks and Recreation. Uh, we're, we're going to be getting a briefing from Smithfield Recreation Association. So gentlemen, take your seat.
Yeah, and, and real, and real quickly for the audience of those that might be viewed, we do have a monitor here, so if it looks like we're not looking at all of the presentation, we are really doing it because it's right down here. So thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Thank you for having us. We just wanted to give you guys a brief overview of Smithfield Rec. We've had a lot of board member changing, and we wanted to introduce those members, um, and then introduce the ones that are here, and then give you kind of overview of where we're at and where we're going to be very shortly, um, if I need to.
I think she's, yeah, we're
So you can go to slide two, I guess. Um, so
I guess I'm going to slide two.
So to start off, I'm John Sundberg. I'm the current president at Smithfield Recreation Association. This is Bo Hamrick. Um, he's the treasurer, Vice President Zach Joyner, and then Derek Joyner is publicity and sponsorship. And then going down from there, we have Kelsey Hall is our current secretary. Um, Bill Harpley is the new baseball commissioner. Jake Mens is doing a wonderful job with the softball side of, uh, softball commissioner. Melissa Bingham does the IT work, so all the registration and everything there. Um, and then Brittany Groff, uniforms, equipment, field scheduling, which is what we'll kind of get into here shortly. Um, Jared Alsch, which is building and grounds. I don't know if you guys have been up to Beal or seen Beal Park recently. He's doing a great job there. We're trying to get that place turned around, looking a little better. And then Michelle Knuts, Santana, she is doing the concession stand and doing a great job there as well.
All right, so I will get the next slide. I broke this one, by the way, Bo Hamrick, treasurer. Um, I broke this into good news, bad news. But all the bad news is because of all the good news. So it's really good news, good news. Um, first one is we look at our spring registration. Uh, this year, opening day was supposed to be Saturday. Uh, Mother Nature had other plans, but we have 514 kids registered for baseball and softball. Just to give you a comparison, last spring in '23, we had 402 children, kids from ages four up through 14 playing baseball and softball. Um, so that's good news. We got more kids out there playing. Uh, we have a total of 44 recreation teams. That is up from 36 last year, which again is good news. Um, and then we have our Sunday Select program, which gives some of our players in both baseball and softball who love the sport and are looking for additional reps on the field to go play other teams in and around Hampton Roads. We have, still have 13 of those. Uh, but it's giving our advanced players an option for more baseball and softball, which is always a good thing. But as I promised at the beginning, good news does come with some bad news. We are running out of field space. Uh, based on our budget, again, we added eight new teams this year. If by 2026, we'll have close to 60 teams in rec alone. Um, and if we do that, we're going to have to cap registration and tell kids they don't get to play. That's something we don't want to do. Um, so again, it's a great problem to have, uh, but one that we're hoping we can find a way around in the future. More good news. We've got phenomenal coaches. Um, in fact, three of these guys here, they all coach multiple teams. Um, and a lot of the kids that come and play here, they come and play because they get great coaching from who we have within the association. Bad news is we got more teams, so we need more coaches. So I'm not asking y'all to come coach. We'd love to have you, but
Good, they're done that.
You got the T-shirt?
Oh, a number of them.
Yeah, um, but to those listening and to everybody in town, you know, if you have a love to, for baseball or softball, and you want to give back to your community, we're always looking for more coaches. Um, one more piece of good news that we have is we started a program with some of our 13, 14, and 15-year-olds where they're now umpiring games. Um, I volunteered to umpire one game, and I will never yell at a referee or an umpire ever again in my life. Um, and that's exactly the message we want to give these kids. We think not only are we teaching them the power and the value of giving back to their community, but also making them better baseball and softball citizens as they hit the high school. So they're going to represent Smithfield, we think, in a better manner as they put on that Packer or Charger or even Windsor Duke jerseys, uh, in the future. So we love having them out there. With that said, as we get more teams, we can always need more umpires. So if you need a good Saturday to get yelled at, come on out, and, uh, we can do it. It just won't be for me, I promise.
Now, we have it Sunday through Friday, so thank you.
But again, that's more a message for our community that, hey, again, if you have a love for baseball and softball, you want to give back to your community, uh, you know, we could always use you out on the fields, setting a good example for these children. One other final thing that we do want to, to highlight is our Nick Staha Scholarship Program. Uh, Nick Staha was a player, uh, who passed away. Um, and his family gave back a lot to SRA, and we have started a scholarship fund a couple of years back to benefit those in our community that baseball may be too expensive for them to play. Um, and so each season, four children are awarded a scholarship that not only covers their membership fee, but their registration fees for both spring and fall. Um, this year, we even got a, um, with a partnership with Dick's Sporting Goods, they provided to those four players all the gears, the gear they need to play the entire year. Um, we also have what's called our lending locker, uh, which allows anyone in the team, in the community, if you're playing baseball and you, you need a new glove or a new bat or cleats are just too expensive, or if, as in the case with my kid, your shoes keep shrinking or your feet keep growing, uh, they can donate their old cleats and pick up a new pair of cleats, uh, so that, again, the cost of playing baseball doesn't have to be something that stops you from playing. Um, I don't have a slide for this one, but I just wanted to also say how happy we are with our partnership with Parks and Rec. You got some good people over there. Um, and we are very appreciative to all that they do for us. Um, we also consider our kids lucky, uh, to get to play at a facility like Luder Sports Complex. Um, some of these coaches, again, they coach our travel teams, our Sunday Select teams. They go all over this area, and some of the best fields they play on are right here in Smithfield. So we thank y'all for that. Any questions?
Just, if, if I may, um, if my math is correct, I wasn't really good in math, 22% increase over the last year as far as the
104% since 2012.
Well, I guess my question would be, are we now drawing, you know, you mentioned the coaches, you mentioned the field, mentioned facilities, everything. Are we starting to draw or steal kids from Suffolk and Windsor and places like that? I see you, heads nodding back there.
Yeah, I think that goes back to, one, the facilities, as I mentioned, uh, and, two, the coaching. Um, they, and I'm not trying to toot our own horn here, but
Success as well. I mean, we've had
I get, I get that. I guess, not, not to sound like the Scrooge, though, um, if, if, if we are ultimately involved in the council as far as, when it gets down to money, um, which everything seems like ultimately does, um, it, where do, where do, where do we set the limit if we're, if we're overextending our facilities, overextending the good news, the bad news versus the good news? Where do we stop and say, well, wait a minute, you know, we're going to support our hometown kids first, and I know we don't want to turn anybody away. I get, I, I get all of that, but where do we draw the line? Or what, what's y'all's business plan as far as thinking about drawing the line? Or what are we, what are we going to do?
It's, um, it's a hard question to answer, and it's one of, do we, you know, do we limit it to Smithfield and Carrollton? Because again, Carrollton doesn't have an option. Um, but when a kid is not happy in some other town, I don't want to call anybody out.
No, I know, look, look, I, I said I coached. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Trying to be nice.
And I'm not saying that it's anywhere near Suffolk or anything like that, but anyway, but go ahead.
Sometimes Windsor doesn't have a team as well, and they kick kids over to ours, bars. So that's what happens. So a lot of the older kids, their younger kids, they don't have a team, so they kick kids over to us for, so there's not really a great plan for that. I know Pony also allows that, so they allow for Entire Western, Tiger Water, which is the affiliation we play under. Um, but we should probably come up with some sort of plan.
I wish they would do, because Windsor has got, that field, that complex over there has got more fields than I think that Beal, or the same number, same amount.
Yeah, but how do you make that determination? Wasn't the county a contributor to Luder Sportsplex when it was built?
Yes.
What is their money cover?
It was just an initial contribution from that facility being built.
So no expectations?
Um, Parks and Rec, Alawak County Parks and Rec has time that they can use the fields, a day or two a year. That was the only thing they requested in return.
It was, and that's what it was, a day or two is what it was. Yeah.
That's interesting. When, well, when Mayor Bowman said, "Out of the locale," I didn't really consider Windsor out of the locale. I was thinking from another neighboring city, uh, where parents were siding their kids up. So you pretty much answered that question where you don't turn away any kids regardless to where they live.
Well, see, that, back to Windsor, it used to be one heck of a rivalry between Smithfield and Windsor, and nobody would cross beyond the courthouse line, and if you did, you know, it just, it just didn't happen. But now, I mean, I, I can understand where you're coming from, but there's, there's got to be a way or somehow, if it's growing, if it's, if it's up 22% in a year, something's going to have to give somehow, some way, and I guess we're looking for y'all to provide us some solutions or Amy some solutions or somebody that's ultimately could be caught holding the bag for finding facilities and things like that, so
I can tell, I can assure you, Mayor Bowman, it's something that is thought about constantly, I know by me, because again, I'm one that says I don't want to turn anybody away.
I understand that fully, as, as, because I coached the little ones. Once they got, they were smarter than I was, that's when I was smart enough to leave it, but anyway, yeah.
That's why I quit coaching it for you. You know, but even with the growth that we have planned in, in, in the town and in the county, um, even if we got to a point where we limited it to just county residents, I think we would still see this level of growth, uh, into '25 and '26.
What percentage now is Windsor?
We got the whole, but it's less than 10%.
Less than 10%?
Less than 10%. We see more coming from North Suffolk in that direction coming over, um, I think, than we would see coming from Windsor.
Have you always accepted, um, I don't want to say kids, because I don't want them to be punished. Do you always, have you always accepted families in, from the Suffolk area outside of our locality?
I've never known them to, to turn away anybody, honestly.
We've always accepted them.
Well, it's good to have growing pains, but they have to have some kind of strategy to resolve it.
I guess I've got the other, you gave us a brief, and are you asking for anything today?
I mean, I can, but no.
This, this
Mayor, I just want both of our user groups to present their stats routinely to y'all so you can hear about their growth, because it's impressive from SRA and Packers and Sports. And it's largely part to the amazing facility that you have.
Well, the other thing is, you know, we can talk about sports all we want to. I look back at those two police officers sitting back there. These kids that start in these programs like this, it's a proven fact that if they have that type of outlet and they have that type of mentorship and things like that, it's less likely to be seen on the wrong side of our Men in Blue as well. So it's more to it than hitting the ball and, and things like that. It's got a lot, a lot of good stuff else that goes with it. And this Nick Staha Scholarship really hits home because I, I, I knew Nick and knew his parents, and that's the time that my son was coming up through the program. Matter of fact, they, I think Nick was maybe a year ahead of, of Connor, but, um, yeah, that's a good program. I'm glad to see that coming along like that.
Any other questions?
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
What else we have, my, uh, Vice Mayor?
I think that's
I'm showing
Well, Amy has something.
Yeah.
Uh, wait a minute.
It's quick. A quick segue to talk about Luder Sports, because in working with our two groups two groups, SRA and Smithfield Packers U Sports, our, we need to start thinking about the master plan for the facility. And instead of handing it over to a firm to do a bunch of research to say, what would work out there, what do people want, I think we need to expand the facility to focus on these two user groups that are already providing great programs for our youth. So I just want council to be on board with that direction, and we do, of course, we need an engineering firm to lay out the facility, but I also want to remind everybody, there's not a whole lot more buildable land out there. So it's not sky's the limit. We have to be very deliberate of what we add out there as far as facilities, but I want ball fields that support football, baseball, and softball. I think that will be the best fit. And to also note, anytime we build any new amenities out there, parking's already maxed out, so we need to build parking every time we build a new amenity out there.
Well, if I may, I think, you know, we were just talking about budget and what's capital and what's that and the other, maybe, is that could be included in, or are you just throwing that out, or you, what are you, what are you going to do? You're running this program?
Yes.
In all due respect.
Yeah, I would like, I guess I would like to budget for an engineering firm to lay out the facility, and what I'm going to do is put together an advisory board with SRA members, Packers U Sports members, Chris Hewitt and myself, and maybe some of our outside user groups, like our baseball tournament providers, and figure out what is absolutely necessary to improve programming out there.
Yeah, because without that, and I'll do, again, we're throwing a dart, a dartboard. Without that, we can't make good decisions.
And I know people want things like pickleball courts and things like that, but the facility just doesn't have room for it, and we need to expand on and support these current programs that are doing so well.
And Amy, in, in your report, will you please advise on a timeline?
Mm-hmm.
So that we can look at what capital needs from a town, and whether we borrow or raise, or how we go about funding these. I mean, I understand your point very well, and it's something we've been kicking the can down the road, but if it's time to get serious about it, which these guys certainly bring delight that it is.
Yeah.
We need to plan for this, because we can't, we couldn't say tomorrow, we're going to have new baseball fields and be ready to go by 2026.
Absolutely not.
So it's something that we have to plan for.
You've got a good point. The other thing, you know, we've been talking about growth, we've been talking about what we want, what's our vision, what's our plan or whatever, to, to, to attract what we want as far as this town's growth is concerned, and recreational facilities for children, that's, people are looking at that stuff really, really hard as far as, will we move to Smithfield and, and be the, so, anyway.
Our SRA facility is a premier program in this area, and it's because of our facilities and our coaches, and these guys right here. I, I know firsthand, close friends who had children in the Suffolk program that are now here, being coached by Mr. Joyner, that would not be here if it were not for what we have here.
Well, I wouldn't go down that path, but you're exactly right.
I mean, that, that's what happened. When, when you have the facility that we built, and we've said we wanted a world-class facility, we insist on everything we do in there being a world-class facility, we have all sorts of kids that want to come out there and be a part of it. So this is exactly, we're the victim of our own success here, and, and, and how we decided to move this along and grow it. And, and, and Mr. Mayor, I think your point cannot be overlooked, that keeping kids in front of coaches keeps them on the right side of the law, whether it be the football program or the baseball program, keeping kids involved with coaches and teammates and making them a part of something. And, and, and especially when, you know, you don't know what's happening in their homes. You don't know how well their mom and dad are getting along, or if they're both there. But when they're on the team, and they're a part of it, they're a part of something, and it's something that we cannot do that, that helps our youth any more than making them part of a team and having those access for them, and particularly a really nice field like we have.
Well, that's what makes me part, or makes me proud of being a member of this governing body, and this, this governance, governance philosophy that I think we have in the town of Smithfield. Yeah, we catch it every once in a while for, because somebody doesn't like what we do, how we do it, or whatever, when we sit around and have these discussions where we have the best interest of our children at heart, of our people at heart, and things like that, I think we're, I think we're going down the right path, regardless of what others may say, utilizing the keyboard aspect of dissemination. But anyway, your point's well taken. I, I think they're doing a great job, and, but, but one more, to another point, as far as world-class facilities, Luda Sports Complex, we, we owe it back to, to the benefactor to make sure that we continue the tradition of that being a world-class facility as well. They gave us the seed money, they gave us the, the, the ability to go in that direction, and, you know, if, if it's time for us to take over and run with it, I hope we're running in the right direction.
I laugh, because I thought it, too. When we were building it, I'm like, I hope we can keep it programmed. Now, it's busy seven days a week.
Amy, do you have anything else?
No, sir, that was it.
I, I do have an observation. In reference to what Mayor Bowman just said, in reference to the benefactor, there wasn't, it wasn't very long ago where we had a conversation about the benefactor possibly giving us additional funding, and there was some clarification that we wanted to determine what that money would be used for. And I thought at that time, we were going to be looking at a master plan to determine how we wanted Luda Sportsplex to expand. Okay, so now we've come back to that conversation, where are we, or where were we with that original master plan?
All of that got put on hold when that conversation kind of dissolved. Now, I think this is the picking that up and moving it back forward.
So from today, it sounds like the consensus is, we're looking to expand Luda Sportsplex via additional baseball, softball fields, and football fields, and nothing else.
Yes, ma'am, and that, you're pretty much built out after you do that.
You're going to be forming a task group.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have no problems with SRA and Smithfield Packers, but I think that there also should be a third party there to determine if there could be something else there.
Okay.
Well, I think the engineering group, once you, once you parse out, in all due respect, Madam Vice Mayor, once you parse out and, and, and lay out what is available and see what additional space is there, that, that'll give us a better idea as well, once they do what they do as far as the layout's concerned.
One little sneak peek of something I'm thinking about for there is a turf'd field for football that's, you know, lined and everything, the lines are constant, and then it could also maybe be used for field hockey, so that would add one more sport offering to our colleagues.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to look at all possibilities.
Okay.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else on the agenda. Anybody else? Council, anything for the good of the town?
We have one last...
We've got public buildings and welfare.
What else?
Public buildings.
Oh, well...
So you want to pass over public buildings and welfare?
No, I do not. Matter of fact, let's go ahead and go to public buildings and welfare that is shared by Vice Mayor Butler. Yes, ma'am?
Well, there's only one thing under this committee, but before Michael gives his report, I'd like to make some comments in reference to doing something in honor of James Chapman. The naming of the street was actually a second request. This, originally, it came about, someone had recommended a street naming to me. I didn't go into a lot of research about it. After I talked with the, the post office and found out what was involved with naming this particular street, and also having a conversation with Tammy, I felt like it was too complex, it involved too many other things to perfect this. I checked into renaming possibly where Mayor Chapman lived, which was history, which only involved his house being a change of address and affecting one other family. After talking with Mayor Bowman, he recommended Quail Street, the fact that it was more visible, and I did not realize until Tammy sent me the list that there were 22 families that would be affected. But prior to naming, renaming a street, his nephew reached out to me, and he wanted to do something in his uncle's honor and present it to the town of Smithfield. He wanted to do a bust. I told him I did not know of anything ever happening like that, but I would check into it. I did check with some people, there were some favorable comments and some not-so-favorable comments, and because of that, I didn't take it any further. However, since that time, I've had a conversation with Amy. Amy has a solution possibly for a bust if that is the donation from the nephew. So my question today is, or I'd like to hear further discussion as far as the street naming or the bust donation. So I'd like to hear some feedback from council to see how they feel. I've heard all kinds of things from some citizens. You know, you don't name things after people while they're still living, that's not true. This council was named after James Chapman while he was living. So the town hasn't set a precedence of naming anything, so I think that the precedence has not been set, and it's whatever the council feels would be in the best interest, I guess, of the community, or the best way to honor Mayor Chapman. So I'd like to hear some feedback from my colleagues. Randy?
Okay, sorry. Ms. Butler, I've, I've thought about this quite a bit, and I don't know how feasible it is, but, you know, we have a lot of Lundine statues in town, bronze statues in town. Mayor Chapman was a very significant member of our town, he was very significant, but historically as our, as our first African American mayor, fitting right in with the culture of our town, to do a bronze statue of the mayor and, and some sort of signage that tells his story, and, you know, the paragraph of why it is could locate downtown Smithfield, could locate out on, on the corner there by 10, where, where we welcome into town, could locate close to his funeral parlor that he operated for, for all the years, lots, lots of options, but I thought that would be a very fitting way to do it. It's probably the most expensive way you could possibly do it as well. I have no idea what that would cost, but, I mean, just putting ideas out there of different items that we could do, or different ways to, to honor him and his history here, that, that was the one that has stuck in my mind most, you know, most purposely, but like I told you at our last committee meetings, whatever you feel is most appropriate, you have my support on.
Jim?
I agree, you have my support in advance, but a couple of clarification questions. So you said another street other than Quail, when he grew up on, only had two houses? Is that an option, or is that, did he grow up, grow up on Quail?
He didn't grow up, he lived on his, he lived on Hillcrest.
Hillcrest, I was, and that was where...
Which is off of Quail Street.
And that's where there were, there were two houses on it, was, was on there, okay. And then as far as the bus, so is the nephew going to, going to donate it, create it, or give us the idea?
He was going to donate it to the town of Smithfield.
Okay, okay.
And I, I had not considered Mike's suggestion at our last meeting when he said, a new subdivision where street names had not been created yet. Personally, I think that if we're going to do something in someone's honor, it, it should be something that there is some kind of correlation to it. And personally, Mike, I, I don't see any, I, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I don't see any correlation or any, any connection between James Chapman and the Grange. Does that make sense?
The only reason why I suggested that was because it's across from his church, and his church is going to see that, that name every time they come up there, and then people coming into town would also see that, so that's, that's the only reason why I suggested, just because of the visibility.
Okay.
And the possibility of making that aware, more, more aware to the public. The idea of a bust here inside this building, I think it's limited to who's going to come in here and really paying any attention to it, so I, I felt like that would be a good idea. What Randy's talking about is another whole ball field, which you and I did speak about. You know, it's easy for Joe Luda to give a...
Yeah.
Whatever, huge statue than it would be for your nephew, so that becomes a financial issue. So I guess I, mine was the visibility to the public, and I don't know how you recognize that any other way, unless there's some other plaque explaining the street name somewhere. That, that's the only thing I, that's why I kind of led down that road with that. There's a parking lot that's supposed to be created for the access to the church also. I mean, so coming in and out of that parking lot, I think...
Um, just parking spaces, not really a parking lot per se. And I don't even know if that was really in the covenants for the Grange, so if not, then it would probably be the closest parking spaces for the church.
Yeah, well, I understand that most of that has been done away with, and the only parking spaces are behind COP, so...
So I, I don't know how that's going to work out.
But I'm in favor of something if we can come to an agreement, so, and I feel sure there's someplace in this building that, Amy, do you...
Yes, sir. So there's two alcoves that flank the front doors. One has the museum cabinet, which they maintain and put historical items in it. I was thinking of using the other one for his bus and some informational stuff that goes with that and the time that he served. And that, we get a lot of visitation, so a lot of people would see it there.
Well, it's rented out a lot, too, so...
Mm-hmm. And everybody walks by there to proceed to town council, and we have weddings and all kinds of other events.
Now, I think everybody's, is supporting you, so I think the decision is basically upon you and your nephew, or whoever...
It's not my nephew. Well, and I have...
It's his nephew.
It's James's nephew.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, that's what, yeah, James's nephew, I'm sorry.
Um, you know, I, I, I just wanted to hear some feedback and some discussion amid all the outside noises that had been going on, and, you know, I don't know, you know, we're in the midst of budget, I, I, we had not talked about any large capital outlay to do anything like that. You know, the other suggestion that Tammy and Amy had as far as the honorary street signing, I didn't really know what was involved in that. I did have a conversation with the mayor from Newport News with their Allen Iverson naming, and that's what they did, you know, and that would be fine. That way, it wouldn't involve the United States Post Office at all, and I think it would, you know, resolve it.
That's correct, yeah.
So I guess it's deciding, you know, do we want to accept the donation from the nephew, or do we still want to just do the street naming? So they're the two options that we have.
I still think it's, it's up to you and the family to recommend or offer, and then go from there. I mean, you've pretty got direction of any way you want to go.
And if he's donating it, do, do we have to choose one or the other?
Ultimately, yes.
Okay, all right.
Jeff, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Let me just tell you the, the whole, the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would say. Valerie and I, Madam Vice Mayor and I started discussing this when it first came out, and I was concerned from a bust perspective. You know, we've had a number of different mayors and things like that, and I was a little concerned about the optic as far as, well, if we do one now, what are we going to do, one for the other mayors that have been here? None, of course, have been the first African American, no doubt. None have served as, I can't remember the 10 years of some, I guess some of them, Bill, you've been around a long time, but I guess some of them had almost as long a tenure as...
I did check with Leslie on that. I, I, I stand to be corrected, I thought James Chapman had been the longest-serving mayor, but based on what the information that Leslie sent me, he was not. He's probably the longest-serving town council person, but I do know he's the first African American mayor.
Yeah, well, that's, that, that, no doubt about that. That's why, that's why I mentioned that. So my concern was, okay, what's the optic going to be if we, if we do a bust here, and where is it going to be, what are we going to do? So we talked about, I came up with the idea, or I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Vice Mayor came up with the street that he lived on, and I said, well, that street is just one small street off of... that he lived on. And I said, well, that street is just one small street off of, uh, Quail Street coming in. My idea was let's change Quail because that way if anybody went down Great Springs Road, they would see Chapman Way as well. The visibility aspect would be better. Um, then of course came up the, the issue about the number of streets or whatever. And, you know, I, I, I get that as well, but I think Madam Vice Mayor mentioned Portsmouth where they renamed the street from Missy Elliott Boulevard. And I think there's a lot more houses and streets there. So the question is, you know, what, what do we do to honor this great man? And, and Amy also advised me that there was some space that she thought would be appropriate here as well, which would serve as a connection, a conduit between this honorable room and here with, with, uh, with Mayor Chapman's name, and also have a bust out there which would give, as you come through the door, kind of an entrance way, kind of a welcome from, for lack of a better term, the way I look at it, from a man that served and did so much for this town. Uh, I, I, I still think now, the bust idea in that area that comes into this entire building, this facility, would, would be a good idea. I think it would serve well. It would be a welcome. It would be, uh, historically significant, um, and, and give some connect, connectivity between the front door and this room. So that, to me, that sounds like a, an idea. I'll say what it's reasonable, whether it's not reasonable, that's just, that's my idea. What I think would be a, a good idea. And, and in all respect to your request for comments by Madam Vice Mayor, that's what I would say. But again, I, I, whatever we think would be the most honorable or most, most, um, appropriate way to honor Mayor Chapman is, is, is fine with me. And supportive.
So once again, the ball is back.
Yeah.
What do you think? Yeah, you've thrown it on us now. What do you think there, Madam Vice Mayor?
The fact that his nephew offered this donation, um, I'm more inclined to feel that it would be more appropriate than the street naming. He didn't request a street naming, um, and I, I'm more in favorable of the bust as well. I mean, there's a relationship between, you know, when you think of the Smithfield Center, it was, um, completed during his term as mayor. Uh, there's the plaque out on the front building, the chamber in here. I, I just think it would be appropriate. Uh, the other side, I don't know when that will happen either, uh, because they are having to resolve some issues right now. So, you know, if it's, if that's not resolved and it doesn't materialize, then I would like for the street naming, the honorary street naming to be secondary. If that's agreeable with town council.
I think we do that by consensus. That sounds fine.
Thank you.
You betcha. And I'm, I'm sorry that I missed that one. I...
Michael, so, you know, I don't know if...
You handled it.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, let's don't muddy the water. We're good to go. Now, does anyone else on council or anyone have anything else to come before?
I have two things. And one, not, not to take away from anything what Valerie's talked about, but we've done a lot with former mayors here, uh, lately and, and things to recognize. Uh, and Mr. Butler, I think you'll know this, where this idea is coming from very well. Uh, I've been attending VMRC for community and resource committee, commission meetings for, since I was 12 years old. And in the commission room, and is a picture of every past commissioner, and it kind of stretches now all the way around the room. And, and even as a 12-year-old...
Well, it started in 1875, and sometimes it had three of them.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, it was pretty interesting for me to see that. I think this back hallway here...
You would have.
That has no pictures on it currently, would be a really unique spot to take all of the mayors of Smithfield and a picture of them and, and the years that they served and, and place them along the wall, uh, just as a, uh, recognition of their service over the years so that every mayor and, and every future mayor, uh, that we have, uh, is at least recognized for their service and hung here in the town hall. And that's not out anywhere terribly obvious, assuming that the director of the center doesn't mind. So then the council thought it would be a good idea.
I do have a note. That is where weddings route their guests to go out to the deck. So it's highly visible. My intention, when I put that art rail up, is to start to have artwork that changed out every so often. So I do have plans for it. I'm sorry it's bare currently, but I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if that would be a good fit for that hallway. Because this isn't always a council chambers.
Right.
So we had our own. We could.
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's a great idea.
Just a thought, not something I'm hanging my hat on, but, you know, we, we've talked a lot about this lately, and that was something that I, I thought was kind of interesting that, that the VMRC did for...
That is.
For a while, and just in a nice way. A little bit of history on it too, so it's somewhat interesting.
I would love to do that. If we had a, if this was a permanent chambers, I think that would be a great use.
Um, the second item I had to talk about was for, uh, Mr. Riddick. Uh, you probably don't know the answer, but maybe I'm wrong. Um, so we have elections coming up in November. Uh, there's a lot of, hopefully there'll be a lot of interest in these elections. Uh, there was certainly a lot of interest earlier. Uh, but it's a unique election because we have three council member spots for four years up and a term to, uh, for Mr., uh, Hall, excuse me, thank you, uh, for Mr. Hall's term. So we have a special election and then a four-year election. How is that going to work?
I don't know yet.
Yeah.
I filed the papers with the circuit court, and I've not talked to Judge Easton about that. So...
Okay.
He's the chief judge, and I don't know the answer.
You better talk fast.
Well, I'm done.
Yeah, well, I, I, I know there's, there's folks out there collecting signatures now and whether they have to declare...
Well, the red says it's gonna be turned over to the board of elections, and, but I don't know the answer to that question yet.
Okay. Well, if we can get any clarification on that for those running, so we can get...
Well, I, hopefully we'll know something this week.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So the judge makes that decision?
I don't know that either.
Conceivably, you're gonna have people that have to opt into one election or the other.
That's, well, right.
That's absurd.
I mean, because there, somebody's gonna be running for a two-year seat. Everybody else is gonna be running for a four-year seat.
For four years.
Conceivably, you know, not knowing how the, how they'll figure that out. But you may have to pick which seat you wanna run for.
You may have to choose.
Well, hypothetically, Jim, um, is filling that seat for one year. Does he have to?
No, he doesn't have to.
Apply, he, he could run for either.
He would not have to. He would not have to.
Right, he could run for either seat.
If you're running for election, why would you choose a two-year term over a four-year term?
Well, if nobody else chose to run for the four, you might wanna run for the two.
It just seems a very difficult, we, we rank them. The fourth place vote getter gets a two-year term. I don't know. It's not, it's not for me to decide, but it's just something I would, I would like to be able to share with the public so that folks that who are considering running know what their options are and how it has to work. And I am not one of those folks considering running.
So in theory, I'll be two years in. I can resign my, my, my final two years and run for a four-year term.
I don't, I don't know. I guess. You asked the question why somebody would run for a two-year term? Well, I can tell you.
These past two years.
Oh, gosh. Okay. Anything else? That's all that I had. Thank you. Anything else to come before council? Thank you all very much for your time, effort, and your hard work in the journey.